We shall come to order. And approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Danelle, second by Cindy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Justin, second by Danelle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Okay, sheriff's report.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to stop down. It's been a while since I've been down here, but last September we changed our contract, so I just wanted to see how you felt that was going. We printed out back to 2010, we contracted for 25 hours a month, what the original contracts were. When we go back to 2010, we averaged 33.20 hours and 10. We averaged 40 hours, 59 minutes and 11. We averaged 38 hours and 44 minutes in 2012. And then 13, we averaged 33 minutes, 3 minutes. And then this year, so far, from January to September, the end of September, we've had, we're averaging 34.95 hours a month. Then if we go back to that July, because we did that contract retroactive back to July 13th, or July of 13th to today, we're averaging 33.91 hours per month. So, we're still on track where we were. You know, so it's kind of like we said, you really wouldn't see a big change at all. So, I just want to pop down real quick, let you know, give you those numbers and just kind of see if there's any issues or how things are going.
Not so much an issue Ken, but can they mix it up on when they're here a little bit more, you know, like all the small towns, I'm sure Saturday night seems to, we seem to have more things rocking and rolling than, you know, Sunday the traffic slows down through Auburn, where during the week it's really, people are running through town pretty fast. You know, and to just mix it up a little bit so that we, and maybe you already do. I try to notice when and where.
Yeah, you got that monthly report there. Someplace I saw somebody looking at it.
Yeah, I certainly have it.
You know, if you look down through here, this is, when it says patrol time, it's usually when they've been here. So, they were here 15 minutes, so they were there from what, start about 2 o'clock in the morning, that time. So, you know, you can kind of look at that one, you can kind of tell when they start on a days.
Sure.
You know, a lot of that is based on the number of calls and where they're at. You know, if you get a call down in this area, you swing down here, if you're a call over the other side, you know, so, yeah, we can look at that and...
You know, just mix it up and make that, you know, covering Saturday night and maybe a weekday traffic through here is, it just gets...
Yeah, during the weekdays, and we've been, since March, we've been running short. So, there's, on an average, yeah, there's only two of us working on the day shift. Normally, there's three on the day shift. And like I said, we have one in field training that's supposed to come out on his own at the end of the month, so once we get that, you should see a little bit more. The other thing we can do if you want is, you know, if you're worried about speed, we got a radar trailer, we have access to, we can come down and stuff a radar trailer, you know. It's supposed to document or give us a print out of how many cars and the average speed, but the last time we used it, it's not ours, it's Sack City's. We used it in early here, not so long ago, and they weren't able to get those readouts for us, so, you know, we're kind of hoping we'd have a traffic count and average speed and tell us, you know, when the majority of the traffic, you know, and that kind of stuff.
Might be good just in the sense that people know we're watching, or, you know, we're trying, we're serious about slowing down, especially when they come up with that hill.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, we'll talk to the chief and see if we can get that done this
Is there a cost associated with that?
No, we'll just bring it down and put it over here probably across from City Hall and chain it to a post and hopefully nobody steals it. Well, that's the big thing, you know, I mean, those things are about $12,000.
Well, don't bring it down before Halloween. I don't, don't do that.
But, yeah, we can, we can sure look at that for you. Anything else? Well, if there's nothing else, I hate to eat and run, but I ended up meeting a sack at 7, so I'm gonna pop in real quick.
You got something to eat?
Yep, I'm gonna hit Sparky's on the way out here and get my supper, pal. So, all right, if you need anything, let me know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the power supply issue. Power supply proposal review.
Neither of our contracts are done. That's, I guess, the news. The Heartland contract is still, the final details are still being worked out. Jane and Verdi and I did visit with the attorney at Allers Law Firm, what did we do, that last Tuesday? Yeah. And he gave us the lowdown and the details of the contract that he had been concerned about, and there were down to one, one item that was not completely resolved, but he thought that they were really close. And as of today, I don't think our city attorney has seen it yet, because we asked for a draft and I haven't seen that yet. As far as the O&amp;M contract goes, I haven't seen that yet either. I did contact Rockin Valley last week and they were supposed to, it was in the hands of their attorney being reviewed before they sent it out to us. So, the word I have from our consultant, John, is that Heartland is not going to get heartburn as long as this is all going to be worked out. We'll be able to approve it on the 10th of November at our November meeting. So, that's the update I can give you on that situation. Any questions for me about that, or Jane, or Verdi, or...
Okay, operation maintenance proposal review.
That was included in what I just said, yep.
Is that part of it?
Yep, that's a part of it.
Okay, electrical rate discussion.
And this is purely a discussion item for you tonight, because one of the things we have not had in the past was this operations and maintenance contract where we paid a retainer, where we had a set expense. We've always just expended those outage calls as they happened, and they were few and far between, and they were just purely an expense that happened from time to time. We know now that we're going to, for the next 10 years, we're going to pay $6,000 a year for operations and maintenance, and that is in addition to those calls that we're going to get, because we're still going to pay the labor and the materials for those calls. So, my question is, well, I guess I'm gonna stop there for just a second. What I have put in front of you, because we all know how much this city lives on our electric utility, and the profits from our electric utility are what funds the library and the fire department and the, you know, the city hall and the parks and all those other things that we don't get enough general fund money to take care of. And so, I wanted to take a look at, at just pure profits or pure profits and losses in our electric utility, and that's the spreadsheet you have in front of you. And what I have done here, at the top, shows the electric sales, that is, sales revenue only, interest on any of our investments, and then the pole rent, which Windstream pays us $707 a year to attach to our poles. Those are the known, known revenues or the constant revenues in our electric utility. There are some things like utility deposits that get paid, but those are refundable. So, I didn't include those because we don't count on those, they're kind of a pass-through to our account. Does that make sense? Okay.
On the revenue for 2014, that was the full fiscal year, or are these calendar years, or is...
These are calendar years.
So, on 2014...
And 14 is not done yet.
Okay.
So...
We should at least meet or exceed what we did in...
Well, we'll, no, I take that back. These are fiscal years, Jane. I take that back. No, this is done. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I still once in a while reverse those, because when I do electric utility reports, they're all done on calendar year. But financial, for the purpose of this, this is fiscal year. This is for the year that ended...
So, giving the dates for 2014.
Would have been last July 1 of 13.
7/13.
Through June 30 of 14. Okay? And we all know how hot of a year 2013 was and how cold of a winter it was. So, you can see that the electric sales numbers are a little higher there than they had been. And I would say that's what accounts for those. It's, there's no other change that would have changed that number other than...
Weather.
Very hot and very cold. Now, in order, I felt that when I did this, in order to take a really close look at what's normal and everyday operating profits and loss, I had to subtract out some of the extra things that we've taken from, from the electric fund. For instance, we replaced meters in 2013, okay? And some of that money went to the water fund to replace those meters. This, however, is just the expense in 2013. That's what the electric fund spent on new meters, okay? We also bought two transformers that year. No, we bought one transformer. And in 2013, we transferred $15,000 to the general fund. If you want to go back to 2011, that $47,000 number is the amount of money that we loaned to the sewer fund in order to pay off that bond early and save ourselves 3.5% interest. And then you'll see in 2014, we installed power to Moore's, we bought a standby generator, we did our reconducting project, and we loaned the water fund $37,000 to pay for their portion of the meters. So, those things taken out, those are above and beyond expenses. This $15,000 number would look a whole lot different. It comes down to normal expenses of $231,972 and a profit in 2014 of just a little over $15,000. See, basically, what I've proved by this, other than the last year, we've been able to live on about $30,000 to $34,000 that is available money for other things and most of the time...
Without, without going into the reserves?
Without going into the reserves, yes.
That's important.
Okay? So, my question for you is, and I didn't do enough work to go beyond this, but my question to you is, when we know that we have a $6,000 expense that next year will come out of what's left of this $15,000, on an annual basis for the next 10 years, do you want to review rates and do you want to consider putting that known expense into our rates?
What I'd like to do, and I have benefit of looking at this earlier, so what I think is important is, yes, we can look at rates, but before we take that step, and I know we're bumping up on January, if that's the, the trigger time, but I'd like to look at those normal expenses. I mean, that's the obvious question that jumps out at you. It, you can raise rates or you can decrease expenses. And we have an increase of expenses of $6,000.
Right, right. Now, I will tell you that going forward, in the early years of that Heartland contract, we should see some reduction in expenses, because our power is, should not cost quite as much. However, that's a direct pass-through to our customer, so it should not change our profitability. Our revenue's going to reduce as well. So, that's, I mean, that's as known as that can be.
Okay.
Okay?
And that's important.
Yes. And, and our other expenses, and you'll find when we look at that, and, and yes, we can look at that, Jane, and that's not an argument, please don't hear that. We will look at that, but basically, our other expenses are the cost of power and wages. Most of whatever sales tax, all of that's pretty constant, and it's all based off of actual usage. So, it's, it's not going to get us maybe where you want to go by looking at expenses. But, yes, we will do it.
But a necessary...
Yes, absolutely. And, and part of, part of any, any consideration we would do. I'm, I'm asking you more in a broad, general way, what's your temperature? How much work should I do? What direction should I take?
Well, first of all, I'd like to work with you on this, and, and I would like to spend, hopefully, the next meeting, a portion of that meeting. This is a good start, but going into the background on where we get the expenses, the revenue is pretty straightforward. But I, I think, I think that's what we need to do before we have, before we say, yes, go ahead and do a rate study, go ahead and, I just think we need to, for everybody's well-being, look at the expenses against those figures.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And that would be my preference.
Yeah, always got mine, that's the bottom line, you know, but...
Wait and see how, how it goes for a couple months, once we get into the new contract.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, that $6,000 a year is a definite. So, I'm telling you, that comes right off the top of your profits, period. There's no other way to look at that other than, do you want to leave it that way, or do you want to build it into your rates? That's, I mean, and how much of it, or a part of it, or, you know, that's, and we aren't gonna know exactly what we're paying for this power until we're about three months into bills. About four months into it is when we're gonna know, because there's too many things in that contract, like the cost of, of wheeling the WAPA power is going to be a pass-through. We don't know what they're gonna charge us for that. We know what Cornbelt's been charging us for that, but we don't know what Heartland's going to charge for that. So, and, and we don't have to do it right away. I just, I wanted to bring this to your attention, that this was a different way to look at all of this than what we've been looking at.
Do you want a motion?
No, I don't want anything. I just want some, I just want to know what your questions are and how you want to look at this. I mean...
Is it a consensus of the group that I, that I work with Nancy? We work up the, we get the detailed expenses, the detailed revenue, if there's any more detail to the revenue. And I had also talked to Nancy about putting together some sort of flow chart, just to look at, kind of have the picture of, of where our profit is, where it goes. Yeah, we fund a lot of things, but let's, that kind of 101 on the electric utility system would be good, so...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. If you don't, your motion, then we'll leave with that.
And I have no other.
No other?
No.
Okay, approve appliance rebate.
We have a customer who has applied for a $25 rebate for replacing a freezer, and I do have the proper paperwork.
I'd make the motion to approve the rebate.
I second.
Motion by Jane, second by Cindy, approve the rebate. Any further discussion on this?
It's not my sister, right?
No. No, she's never followed up.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, opposed, motion carried. Okay, I got no permit for Windstream.
Windstream is putting some fiber cable through town.
Is that good news?
Um...
I mean, will that help our speed and all of that?
No.
No. I would think it would be good news.
Janice says it is.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, maybe. It says, "Windstream is proposed cable and facility installation service for service to the AT&amp;T cell tower." They're going from here out to the cell tower. Whether or not that's going to help us or not, I have no idea.
Well, you would think it would.
You would hope it would.
Yeah.
But it's Windstream, guys.
So, and they need a permit because they want to dig on the city property, is that it?
Well, they're going to go up the DOT right away. They have to have a permit from the DOT. The DOT will not give it to them until the city has said, "We agreed to." And, well, basically, what you're saying is, they've made you aware they're gonna do it.
They're basically, what, boring up along 71?
Yeah, they're placing buried 96 fiber and 1.2, 1 and 1/4 inch interduct via directional bore along the west rightaway of US 71 from 135 feet north of the intersection of West Second Street, which is about right here. Center line in Auburn, north to across 71 via directional bore at the intersection of Iowa 175, then placing buried fiber only west along the north rightaway of US 71 to new fiber optic PED, whatever that is, at the rightaway and on an existing AT&amp;T cell tower. Cable will be placed at a minimum depth of 30 inches at 5 feet from the rightaway and at minimum depth of 48 inches under the DOT roadways and ditch lines. Project is entirely within the city limits of Auburn, and that's not true, but whatever.
So, will they, will they not put your garages there?
Not at 48 inches.
Well, it says 5 feet from the...
Or not at 5 feet, because there's an 8-foot shoulder. So, they'll be in the shoulder of the road.
And what about, will they tear up parking here?
No.
No, it's on this side of the road.
Usually what I've seen them, they usually got small holes they dig.
Yeah, they're about 2x2 hole.
Yeah.
The digging machine goes down.
I see.
They usually gotta take a little, suck all dirt out of them.
So, you don't see a whole lot of debris on top?
No, we kind of fix some different spots.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not too invasive. It's amazing to watch them, because they got a little machine, they can get it, turn it, they can drive it down, they can go up and around, and it's unreal what they can do.
You can walk out there with a reader and see how far down it is, actually, rather than just boring horizontally.
Yeah, they can go around.
You can walk along and find out if it curves a little bit, or if it's...
Really?
Yeah, they can go around pipes, they can go under stuff, it's unreal what they can do.
Well, I'd make a motion, do you need a motion on that?
Yep.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, the Iowa Department of Transportation rightaway permit for Windstream.
Justin, you're the second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Jane, second by Justin. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, nuisance abatement garbage.
We have a home that is gathering all of their garbage in their backyard, and it is a mess. And we haven't sent a friendly letter. We probably could start there, but...
Is it fenced in?
No. It's the house just north of the fruit stand. That doesn't mow.
Over the yard, or is it a big pile? That's south of the fruit stand.
It's, it's, uh, south of her propane tank, which was last, or last year's garbage she set out there, and now it's, she's just dumping it on the east side of her house, going out there, just, just pile of that.
Is it loose, though? I mean, is, or is it, is it in bags of garbage?
It's in bags, but they don't need to...
No, no, I, I...
They just dump it into city bags, is that basically what the...
No, no, that's it. It's in black bags or wherever the heck it is, it's not city bags.
I'm gonna be a health hazard.
It absolutely is, guys. I mean, I, I just would, rather than trying to do much too friendly, because I don't really respond to anything anyway, would really kind of like to send a formal nuisance abatement that gives them 10 days to get it cleaned up. But I learned long ago to not do those myself, to come to you guys to get direction to do that.
Cover.
Exactly.
Well, after the 10 days, if they're doing it, then what?
Then we go in and clean it up and charge them.
And that letter will say that, correct?
Yep, yep.
How far away is our city cleanup?
A week from Wednesday.
So, it falls within, unfortunately?
Yeah.
Well, who cares if they'll get it cleaned up?
Right.
So, they could go out for...
What happens if they violate again? I mean, how long is a nuisance abatement? Just a one-time thing?
Pretty much, yeah.
And then they collect again, and, okay.
Yeah.
That's just a vicious circle with them. But Nancy, let me get this straight. So, they could, they could coincide with the city cleanup day, and even though it's not in bags, someone would pick it up?
On that day.
Boy, they got lucky.
But isn't that also an excessive?
Yes, yes.
He has the ability to...
First stuff should be in bags, right?
Yes.
Because if I'm gonna help pick this stuff up, it's gonna be in bags. It's garbage.
Oh, it's not in bags? I thought you said it was in bags.
No, it's not in Auburn-approved bags.
It's gonna be ripped out and everything else, that's what I mean. They're bags, but, but I mean, for a year, a year-long bag sitting outside, now what's...
What's been in it? Dogs, cats?
Yeah.
Rats?
God only knows, and who wants to really, yeah.
I'll make a motion that you send them an official, very stern nuisance abatement and tell them they got 10 days and...
Should I tell them that it can be picked up by the garbage guy, but it has to be in city-approved bags?
And they need to, and tell them they need to, uh...
Well, at least in secured bags.
Pick up the garbage, do not kill our bags, because on that day, they're not gonna...
They're not gonna do the city bags, so...
Listen, if we can get them to get it all, I'd be more concerned about making sure they get all the garbage in bags, and the torn bags need to be placed in new bags.
Okay.
I would at least say secured bags.
And if they don't take advantage of that...
To the street.
To the street.
Yeah, yeah.
By the house or halfway.
I mean, through the alley.
Yeah, at the alley.
Does it go through the alley?
Alley, yeah. And we don't have that sitting on the highway.
No, do you get that, Nancy?
Yep, I do.
She said that people put their garbage, she said the alley.
Okay, yeah. The alley's fine, but not on the highway.
Yeah, that one house next door to them still burns garbage dropping on.
Oh, I know it does. I need a second.
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 Motion by Jane. Jane, second by Justin. We've discussed it quite a bit. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Oh, consider hometown pride program. I need help on that.
Yeah, that is the one, if you remember, Chloe Wallace with SETD was in here, the last meeting, and explained to you. Since then, they had a meeting in Walllake with interested parties from the county. I was not able to go, and neither was anybody else from Auburn.
It's got away from me.
Yeah.
Well, I forgot about it, or I would have...
No, I had it written in my calendar, but...
It was on the 30th, Thursday.
Yeah, anyway, anyway, I guess we didn't really discuss it the last time, how interested is Auburn, because there, I cannot get a number, but there will be a cost. There will be meetings that we have to attend. The cost is to pay for a paid staff person to operate this program within the county. I think we're being told it's a, a three or four-year commitment, and it's $20,000 per year. And how it's going to be divided, I know the supervisors have said they want to contribute. SETD could have some money to put in. I don't know if you guys are, are you interested in participating in something like this, or are you not?
Well, I guess my thought process was, is getting ran out of the SETD, not, gonna need another staff member or more...
Well, the staff member is not to employ an extra person within the county, Justin. This is, this program is run by Keep Iowa Beautiful, and it would pay their staff member. Okay? Yeah, there's another layer.
Would it look too harsh to say, "We've got Nancy Jansen, thank you, but..."
Well, but, we haven't done anything at this level since our streetscape, so...
What can we afford to?
Well...
I mean, really, I mean, we can do small projects of our cleanup like we have on our list, but...
Yeah, what we found, though, the last time, Justin, is the... Yeah, what we found, though, the last time, Justin, is the money follows the project designs. And if we do nothing, then nothing comes. So I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to take your temperature.
Electrical profit margin. I wish we had more information when it all involves... Well, the cost. What will cost for all? That's what we don't know.
Twenty thousand, whole cost or city cost?
That's total cost per year for the program. And I'm, I'm thinking eventually it's going to narrow down to a per capita, per community. Whether it's $20 or whether it's $100.
Preference.
Pardon?
And then so does preference. I mean, whoever's contributing more dollars, you're gonna expect more dollars to be spent there.
Right, you see, it's the same old thing.
You know, it, it's a...
There...
Can, can we do this? Can we say, "You need to give us a number"?
Yeah, absolutely. You can do anything you want with this, because I can't get anybody, nobody will nail anything down, and I'm not in the position to drive this right now.
Too many, yeah.
So...
All right, just tell them that...
If they come up with actual costs, you'll consider it.
Yeah.
Sure.
May consider it.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I wanted, because they're bugging me about it, and it's like, first of all, don't set a meeting for a night I told you in advance I couldn't be there.
That's a non-action item for the time being?
Yeah.
Are we done with that?
Yeah, we're done with that. I gotta look in here real quick to make sure. We had a customer who was going to ask you for forgiveness on some sewer charges based on water leak, but I made, I told them they had to write a letter to you, and they haven't done it, so we're done.
Wow.
I'm, I told them I wouldn't do it for them, so...
Well, yeah.
So it was, the water leak issue was a personal...
Yeah, they had a leak in a crawl space under a house and didn't know it, and I called the first month and said, "Your water usage is high," and...
Unreal.
Everybody ignored me, and I called the second month, and, well, actually, I called the landlord the second month, and then it got taken care of.
So what, what will happen with that? Will that person just be paying monthly on that?
I'm afraid of it, I think.
To the landlord?
No, to us. And they, they did, they did make a payment this, last week, so we're working on it, but I, you know, I said, "We don't have a policy for forgiving that portion of these kinds of things, so it has to go in front of the council for consideration, and I'm not going to make that request on your behalf. You have to do it."
Fair enough.
Our water leak issue is done with?
Yep.
Approved sign replacement program, Resolute in 1415. I understand we can get, uh, traffic signs replaced, no sarge?
Right. The Iowa DOT has a sign replacement program for small communities to replace stop signs and some other signs, not the street name signs. You can't get those, but... And Jerry had come in the other day and addressed to me that we needed to replace some stop signs, and I said, "Well, let's, let's replace all of them that aren't, aren't new." There's a new reflectivity standard that we've been kind of looking the other way on. Um, we can get up to $5,000 in signs and new posts to put them on if we need them. Free of charge from the DOT, they'll deliver them to Carroll or Rockwell City. The only cost we'd have is to go that far and get them, and for Jerry to install them.
We have somebody there.
Hi!
I was gonna talk to him on like 30 seconds.
Oh. So, so Nancy, that means they like that sign that gets knocked over all the time by Sparkies?
That's the states.
That's a state sign. That's a state...
That's...
But they won't replace that one?
I don't know. The, the state won't replace that.
The state always does it.
Oh, okay. Kind of keeps it upright?
Yeah.
The, the first stop signs off anything off Main Street, those are states. That's not cities.
Okay.
So when they keep getting knocked over, it just, if I see it, I call them and tell them it's broke or, you know, whatever, but...
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
So the stop signs that were, that we need replaced are, well, we're gonna replace them because there's new reflective...
There's new reflectivity standards, plus they're, they're on the side streets. And there's a couple of them...
Like Justin's house, there's four stop signs there. Some are faded, you know, you know, that kind of stuff. That's, that's why I was bringing it up, and then she told me this program.
That's good.
We, we did it in Litton a year ago and replaced...
So you guys will decide where, where and what needs replaced and...
I'm gonna write down everything. There's no way in heck we're gonna get $5,000 off the sign we got. We got 16 stop signs and holes that we got.
You got 16 stop signs? Wow.
Four at my intersection, four at one end.
Yeah, we'll be lucky if we request $1,000 from them, so...
Two up by the house.
Or on these stop signs, they're gonna have little, uh, flashing lights on top?
No.
They ain't giving them.
No, that costs money.
Church, church.
Yeah.
All sides of the church.
Oh, yeah, she knows.
Yeah.
Maybe call the... What other signs are out there besides stop signs?
We got, like I said, 16 stop signs, we got three. And, you know, they got the kids with the, with the teeter totter on them or whatever they call that sign. Park, but, you know, don't say that stuff when they're in. We got one dead end.
One dead end?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it takes us...
Yeah.
And one park sign, huh?
Yeah, what?
One park sign, you said?
Three, no, three parks.
Three.
Three of those.
We can also get the little, the little signs that say two-way or always stop. If we have any of those, we can get those, too.
If they stop at it, I mean, the, the, just like up the corner there, you know, if they can't see a stop sign in front of them, it's...
Pedestrian crossing signs are on here.
Oh, I suppose it is in a dead end. I was thinking of something on that access to the dump.
Yeah. What we can't do is add signs under this program.
Well, that doesn't...
We can only replace them.
A little over 40 years ago.
Yeah.
Correct. We take the other one down, we, I can put the other dead end road sign up there.
Well, that would work, yeah.
Yeah.
The next time qualifies.
There you go. 30 years from now in a qualify.
One way of looking at it, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, now, now you can...
Call them, resolution?
I make a motion for a resolution, 1415.
I'll second.
Motion by Justin, second by Cindy. Replace their signs. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Partial report.
Um, is there anywhere we can discuss that in a few minutes? Because I think Jane wanted to say a few things. She won't be here till quarter to seven.
Yeah, brother.
That's okay if we, our public forum?
Well, if we're done before quarter to seven.
We won't. It's only five minutes.
Do you want to have Donita come in?
Um, not now, she's gonna answer the phone. Let's try public forum.
Okay.
Here I am.
You got the phone?
Okay, I was just, have we heard anything when they're gonna come and work on the drain yet? Or, I mean, clean them out?
I called the guy up this morning, it won't be this week, and he's hoping next week. He's all booked up, backed up, and everything else.
And who is it that's doing it?
Nancy Rehab...
Rehab Systems out of Cherokee.
And that's what they do?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, they got the machine that's, it's under, you gotta see us when they do this. It's kind of, it's, it's kind of interesting to watch this thing.
Yeah.
You wouldn't think you'd get a hose, you know, for, I mean, go up, up lined. But just water pressure, and, you know, they put nozzle. It, it is actually kind of interesting to see this thing.
Does it have a little camera on it?
They could set it up and, no, this thing here, they, they cut it, and the water brings anything down there, and then when it gets there, they suck up the stuff. It is, is actually kind of interesting.
Cool.
And you had crew to go down and do what they could do.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And tell them about your other little expedition while we, we have extra time with your sidewalk you dug up.
Oh, the one by, well, they can't lose their now, that's, was that Scoot Ordner lived there?
Yeah, yeah. Jeremy.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the drain always, always ran. Last winter, though, it just froze up, you know, we had a pond there, it wouldn't go down, you know, I would probe it through there. I got crew to go, we sucked out a few of these things here. We were, we started on that, we started sucking it out, you know, and I took a spade, you know, I'm hitting on this dirt, you know. There's no way the water could go through this thing if we went on there and, with it, well, it turned out to be, it had a, put whatever, 16-inch, uh, field tile, you know, one of those white tiles, and they had a hole there. I filled, you know, I, I could feel it when we're doing it. Why would somebody cement this thing there? Well, I came back there a couple days later after doing that, and got a look at it, the sidewalk sunk down in front of that hole. Okay, so I took a fork with a skidler, took forks up. Well, there's no tile through there. So I asked Warren Dean, I says, "Anything about that is..." God, I never had a problem with that. I said, "I didn't either till last winter, you know, it froze." Well, then it rained that night before, and I went back up there and looked at it. Whoever put that sidewalk in took the tile out.
You're kidding.
Yeah, and the sidewalk sunk down, and that's, you know, what...
So what's the fix?
There were no sidewalk right there, the side...
No, I, I know, but so do you put tile in?
No, I, I put, no, I put another thing up close to that thing there.
I see.
But like I said, I took, like I said, I took the sidewalk up, there was no clay tile, no, there was no tile whatsoever. I was just baffled. So like I said, it had to rain enough where it kind of...
Probably the first time somebody's flipped it bad in a very, very, very long time.
Awful long time. But like I said, it just, it drained underneath that sidewalk enough, and it just kept washing the dirt down, and the sidewalk kept floating down, you know, and it just plugged up the hole.
How did you get the dirt out of those? Like the critical you said?
Yeah, he's got, he's got a, a back deal.
I know the stars was cleaned out. He had a bill in there. Did they run the back or you ran the back?
No, I would, one guy did it, and I took a spade, you know, just kind of loosened it up so, you know, keep it going there. Didn't take long. No, I, I stole it.
Great idea.
That part, that place there, I, I spayed that out. This was something that goes straight up and down.
You hear all that?
What?
You hear all that?
Yeah, I did, but I'm not done yet.
Oh.
Oh.
I'm gonna, here's a piece, I have original cost is on top. And then my insurance is gonna give me the $1,122.94. Basically, I'd like to get at least, my deductible's $1,000, plus they're calling it, you know, $20, 20% of depreciation or whatever on it, so I'd like to get at least some, your guys as an insurance company would help to help me get, so I get that done. You know, we did it one time. One other time, you guys, the city paid to help fix it, wasn't this bad? You know, like you said, the top one is what it cost me originally to put it in. My carpet's sitting in Carroll waiting to go in, and I ain't gonna do it until this, you know, the drain gets fixed, so... My sump pump is pumping constantly, so...
There's water in the ground.
Well, yeah, I realize that. There's a lot of water in there, I know.
Yeah, there is.
What's your phone number, Dick?
My number? He called me on my cell. It's 712-790-0317. If I don't answer, I'll have to call you back, because if I'm on the road, I can't talk.
Okay, okay. I, the only thing that we can do, counsel, is turn this over to our insurance company and let them handle it.
That's fine. I mean, I, I don't care, as long as I can get part of that. I mean, I can, if I can get 1,200 or 1,400 out of your insurance, oh, yeah, I'll take care of the rest. You know, because I don't...
Well, let's see what they do.
Yeah, I can't guarantee anything, but...
I know, but I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that's what we can do.
I know that one time when I had Nathan come in, and the, the city paid for Nathan putting it back and cleaning it and everything at one time.
Our insurance did.
Yeah, the insurance.
Okay. I didn't even know that, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's been, I don't know how many years ago they did it.
Okay. We'll turn it over and see what happens.
Anything else, Dick?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Donita's gonna give us the summer reading program. Hi.
She said to tell you she doesn't want money.
Yes, I, I, everybody can take a deep sigh. I want nothing from you tonight.
Waste your time.
Well, the mayor was in the library earlier telling me about the windy librarian that's gonna screw up the whole city council meeting, so...
No, she's not, because the city clerk will tell her to.
I just thought I'd give you, thank you, Nancy. I thought I'd give y'all a quick recap, so you can see where your money's going. Um, this year, we had the biggest summer reading program we've ever had. Um, I, I don't know why, but it just was huge. We had nine programs. Um, of those nine programs, five we had presented, meaning somebody came in and gave a program. Two were crafts, which I did. One was a talent show, and one was a pizza party sponsored by, um, the, the library board and myself. Um, the total attendance to all of the nine programs was 370. That makes the average attendance, I've got the, I've got it split out by one, the average attendance is about 41 per, which is the largest we've ever had. Um, we had, um, 26 kids participated in the walk, in the reading log part, where you write down, you read and write down your, how many minutes you read. We do minutes versus pages, because everybody reads at a different speed, and so that kind of puts everything on a more level playing field. Um, and this year, they broke all their, I thought last year, we would never be able to break it, but this year, they did 39,330 minutes over the summer. Uh, 26 kids did. That's, that's the equivalent of 655.5 hours these children read over the summer. Um, they did a really super job. They don't have to participate in that. They can just come to the program. So there's no, you have to, if you're gonna enjoy the programs, you have to read. That's not, that's not a criteria. They did this voluntarily. Um, we had, um, I, in addition to the prizes we purchased, um, we went out, we had, um, the family bunny clapper donated, Tony King donated some prizes, Sparkies donated ice cream, the Capri Theater in Lake City donated, um, free passes. Artwork Studio in Carroll, um, donated our grand prize, which was a free art lesson. Kings Point Water Park donated some passes. Carroll Pizza Ranch, some large pizza coupons, and Culver's of Carroll donated ice cream. We had enough prizes that every single child that read got to get something. You know, that way, at the end, when we gave all our, all our stuff away, they, there's different thresholds. For every 15 minutes read, they, they get a sticker. For every 10 stickers, they get a small prize, something. Uh, uh, ice cream from Sparkies, uh, something, you know, but then there's also the end-of-the-year reading prizes, where we total up who read the most. And we had enough with, with the people that donated to, um, give every, even, even the littlest kid that had two stickers, and he was four, and he was so proud of the two stickers he had, he got to get something. So we were really happy about that. I had teen volunteers again. Beth Belt, Jenny Green, Derek Honeycutt, Ally King, and my son Zach, they showed up to every single program. And if they wouldn't have, I would have been up a creek without a howl, because when you got 41 kids and you, you need a little help. Um, this summer, I spent $877.76 on the summer reading program. And the breakdown of that is $505.76 coming from our discretionary spending, and then 372, um, was from the fundraisers. And the 372 was for that science program we had. They were the most pricey, pricey person we had. Um, uh, they, that turned your average cost per attending to $2.37, which I think is the best bargain in Auburn. Um, it was, the kids were great. It was a great program. They read a lot. Um, it was just a really good summer. So I want to thank you again for supporting our program, and I just think, um, I just think it's, um, a really good thing here. It's just my personal feeling that in a small town like this, when you've only got a couple things... that in a small town like this, when you've only got a couple things, I mean, we're not big enough to have a rec center, you know, we don't have that kinda money. You only got a couple things, then a couple things ought to be really, really good. And so that's what I'm trying to do with the summer reading program. Um, as families move in, more, I had more little kids attending this year and that makes me excited. Because then that means they're gonna start, they all had a good time and they're gonna start coming in. So thanks again for your support of our summer reading program.
Thanks for risking yourself for forty-one kids.
There is hair, but it is getting great. So, but the kids really were, I mean, it is a lot because you have, in the forty-one kids attending, you know, you have diverse ages, but by and large, knock on wood, we did fine. So, nobody went to the emergency room. And everybody was happy when they left.
And I happen to know you have kids coming from Carroll for your summer reading program.
Yes, I do, I do. A lot of the kids, I have Carroll, and I had some Lake City kids too. I had some coming from out of town. Their grandparents maybe live in town. I have several grandparents live in town here. And so they came here, they had come last year and their grandparents brought them again this year because they had such a good time.
And you have some that don't have grandparents in town, cause I, I had lunch with a friend the other day who said, my grandkids come up to the summer reading programs cause they're so awesome. And they, kids live in Carroll. And she lives over by Breda.
I just assumed that the Carroll kids all had grandparents here.
Uh-uh.
Well, super.
Yeah.
Well, super.
So, very cool.
Well, that's what we wanna hear, isn't it? Thanks, I'm gonna, thank you very much. Thank you. The next time you see me, I'm probably gonna want something, just so you know.
Budget's around the corner.
Happy hour painting, I wonder what they do.
Drink wine.
They paint good too, don't they, Jane?
It works.
Public works.
Back up to the car show.
One at a time, please. City clerk.
Car show.
Please back up to the car show.
We haven't done the car show right here, so.
Well, we don't, don't come to the library.
Yeah, because we skipped that.
What about the car show? I think I saw something on here.
That's in there. Yep.
Well, with the, um, the weather issues that we had this year, you know, we did, I think we did a good job, you know, with the car show. It turned out really nice because we were able to park them on the street, which I think even turned out better than parking them out in the field. Um, like we did the previous year. Because it seemed like, you know, they were closer and, um, and they were closer to the vendors, you know, because we moved the, the vendors on the field. And I think Dolly did an awesome job because she had, um, the biker.
Right, she had her bike.
Poker run.
Poker run, yeah.
Her first bike poker run, yeah.
Yeah, and she had all of the bikers come and register at the field. So they, you know, then took a look at, you know, the cars and, you know, so we had, I think we had some nice attendance. Personally, I thought we had more attendance this year than we had last year. But I don't know if that's really true or not, maybe it's just because it was closer.
I think it's cause it was all more confined.
Yeah.
Or last year we were spread out more.
But, um, so this year we do not have to come to you to ask you for money because we didn't have enough. Um, we do have a positive balance this year. And so I am recommending that we pay back the city three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, from what we owed, um, from the previous year. So, I know that's not all of it, but, um, you know, we would like to keep something in the account so that we have something to work with next year. Because I think next year we will have more expenses. So I'd like to make that recommendation.
So you only wanna pay back three fifty and, and what you really owe is seven thirty-four, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think you did a phenomenal job. Both of you, um, all of you, cause I know you, you did too. I think you did a phenomenal job, but, I feel pretty strongly that we need to, in my opinion, we need to pay the city back the full amount, especially, and, and that's, uh, it wasn't provided as a loan. It was provided as a one-time exceptional situation that we would cover until, which would allow you to have it again. And then, uh, until such time that your profit allowed a payback. And incrementally, I, I feel pretty strongly that, uh, it needs to all be paid back. We've never done that for any other organization.
I know, but every other organization in town does have funds that, um, the city supports a lot. And, you know, the city does not support anything that we do. So any money that goes into this, you know, we have to make it on our own. And it's very difficult to make any money when you don't have facilities in town to hold proper fundraising activities. So, um.
But that's, that, you were given that landscape or you were given that, those conditions of when you decided to go ahead and have it again.
Well, I think last year it was promised upon profit, it will all be paid back, whatever the profit was. I mean, if they had enough to cover it, it was gonna be paid back.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying that we're not, three fifty is all that we're ever gonna pay the city back.
Well, I know, but I, I think it was next year when they made the money back to cover it, it was to all be paid back.
Because it was such an, an exceptional gesture by the council. It's just something you never.
I guess, maybe, uh, you're gonna have to possibly look at combining the car show under the rec committee or something and try to coincide with those guys to make this a rec event. Cause that, to me, in my mind, that's where it should fall. It's a recreation event.
Recreation committees for the kids more. So that's why that group was put together.
But it doesn't have to be. And, you know, that begs the question.
Well, that'd be kid only. I mean, rec, rec, to me involves everybody in town. I mean, that.
Originally, that's how it started. I, I think that also begs the question of consolidating some of our efforts. You know, why not do, Jason Ludwig made that, made that request. That we, we start to consolidate our efforts so that we don't have the historical going off doing one thing and the car show doing something standalone another, the rec committee do something, yet another thing. You know, in fact, I thought we were gonna all get together possibly as representatives of the different groups to talk about that. And see if we could coordinate our fundraising efforts, including the library.
Well, fundraising, special events and everything.
Did he talk about that here?
Yeah.
That, that was when they wanted to use the, uh, the concession stand for.
There, that was here. But I didn't get that out of them, but that's okay. Well, I just, I think it's a valid concept that, you know, that all the groups that are into fundraising try to get together.
Get coincided one day.
Yeah, that would be, ought to be.
Anything else, but?
No. So, do we have to make a motion on this?
Unless you're willing to accept Jean's recommendation.
I'll make a motion that, uh, that the car show event committee pay back the entire seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents out of the profits from the last car show.
Second.
Motion by Jane, tagged by Justin. That the car show group pay back the city donation. Any further discussion on that? Did I have it right?
Yeah, except it wasn't a donation, but. Yes, you have it right, huh?
All the votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain. No.
You want to stay?
No.
I abstain.
Yeah, I know you did. Turn now, abstain.
I voted no.
Any more business up there before we continue with the discussion items and reports? Okay. City clerk, you pretty well taking care of, go ahead.
Um.
How come he jumped me?
Cause he's lost. You already talked.
Public works a little while ago.
Well, that's what gets out of town, tell you we're doing the car show.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to see if I can get a huge front seat or a city pickup. I go in and out of that seat so much, it's kinda, kinda sitting on the harness.
You sitting on the springs?
No, they're gone too.
Are you gonna get ejected, please?
Will this pad help?
You're gonna get scarred up, Jerry.
That ain't gonna work. I mean, I'm sitting in just kinda sloping a little bit. Go without a quads or something to see if I can get one that's a little bit better.
Go ahead and go.
Yeah, if I wanna get one, I would.
Go for it.
Good. Hate to see you have to get a tennis shot there in the truck.
Work or something.
Doctor, get a spring wound.
Something pinched bad.
Well, that too. I didn't wanna say that.
Yours and that, yours and that Ford, though, yours should be, no, yours.
His is a Ford.
That's right.
You better keep yours locked.
I am.
Don't get close to quads. That's, that's all I got.
Okay, you don't need any action, go ahead, make a secret place for you.
Well, it.
No.
Okay. Anything else, Jerry?
Oop, that's it.
Now, may I go to the city clerk?
Yes. I am at IMF away Thursday and Friday, so after about noon on Wednesday, I'm not here, so, until Monday. Other than that, that's about all I have.
What is IMF away or?
Iowa Municipal Finance Officers Conference in Des Moines, my, my twice a year training.
That's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday?
Thursday and Friday.
This week.
Yeah. Otherwise, that's all I have.
The update is when, the thirteenth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. The day's the thirteenth. Why? I meant to say the fifteenth.
If it doesn't snow, we'll be okay.
Don't say it, honey.
Okay, mayor and council, uh, council have any report? Mayor doesn't, right now.
No, I can give you an update on, uh, solid waste. Uh, they're looking at a couple of options, including the possibility, I think I mentioned this, uh, the possibility of actually shutting down the, uh, landfill. The bottom line for Auburn is, we would be much better off if we were not a part of that agreement and didn't be assessed. But we are, and it's something we can't get out of without them allowing us to get out of it. So, uh, they're looking at probably higher assessments next year, but uh, the short-term plan is to probably close the landfill within the next three or four years. But they will have enough.
They just come by opening up another cell?
Yeah, they have to open up another cell because, uh, they're filled up.
So they're, they incur that hundreds of thousands of dollars and then possibly close down.
They have enough in reserves that they can cover that, but, uh, they need time to, there's some closure costs that if you close the landfill, you have to pay for the long-term, yeah, long-term testing and all that.
How are we supposed to fill up Carroll?
Uh, actually, if we were a part of Carroll without not being part of the Sack County agreement, uh, we could get our garbage hauling done much cheaper.
What about recycling?
Not much cheaper, but cheaper. The recycling, they're, they will continue to be a trans, uh, transfer station, I believe is what they call it.
And building that, then it's gonna decrease operations there too.
Well, no, they'll continue.
In their current capacity, they'll maintain that.
Yes.
So, if that happens.
Once they close the landfill, though, we're, we're out of the.
We're out of the agreement of having to bring recycling there too.
Right, right.
So we can do everything in Carroll County.
And Carroll County is the major landfill apparatus operation for.
In this region, isn't it?
Oh, Western Iowa. It's, they have, Carroll County is huge. I don't know how big their landfill is, but it's obviously, they're, uh, they're cutting edge recycling, they, uh, yeah. In fact, Lampy said that, well, and you know, this is like saying, well, if we weren't a part of the agreement, but, uh, you know, we could go to the, we could go to the garbage collection system that they have in Carroll, which is you get those huge containers.
When they have the arms.
The guy that doesn't get out of the truck.
Yeah.
That would have to do with bags.
Yes.
Push forward, close it.
Yeah, anyway. Anyway, so, uh, I talked to Nancy a little bit about this, uh, you know, we'll probably be looking at some sort of increasing garbage uh, to cover the assessment. But I'll let you know more specifically. At the end, uh, we have a meeting the fourth Tuesday, whatever it is.
Everybody will love that again.
Yeah. But there might be something in the wind too that we can, uh, there's changes coming. And, so, yeah, it's never good news, but I, I do think that them shutting down the landfill would be the best for Auburn. It really would, because it's, yeah, well, anyway, that's my opinion. So.
Well, I said, uh, Chauvin County, a lot of these are all in Carroll already.
Well, Harlan comes up, I mean, yeah, Coster Dang goes down on semis. Loads semis and then hauls it all the way from Harlan. I mean, that's.
I know we were paving a bunch out there near this, this steady stream of stuff through there.
It's amazing, whoever manages that.
Coster does a lot of garbage trucking.
Yeah.
For whatever, I mean, they got these trucks that have the mobile floors and they just push it all off the back.
Yeah, the same ones they use to bring the, whatever, for the turkey buildings.
Yeah.
Oak straw, whatever, oats, shells, whatever they use.
That's crazy.
Just, uh, do you remember planning anything for fall, like a fall fundraiser? You're aware of?
We have our, ones are pancake, that's February, didn't it?
That's not October, right?
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Do they do that Kenny's soup thing, or?
That, one is just a, uh, we do our mailings like we always do and then we have our cheese feed at the end of the year. But other than that, that's, that's all I'm aware of. That's all we've talked about anyhow.
Well, I'd kinda heard through the break that maybe you guys would go to something this fall on the car show. If you were, we would correspond with the same day.
Not that aware of. But if something comes up at that meeting Wednesday, I'd let Nancy know if they do discuss something, but.
You're looking at a date for here before we get out of the Sack County agreement?
That would be, we, we will actually have more detail. We've had a consultant come and talk to us. But we'll have more detail on a real plan, uh, at this next meeting. So I'll be able to report back out on what, what we're looking at. But yes, they're opening up another cell, but it's not, as I understand it, it's not a huge development. It's the cell itself, it's over the top of another cell, so, that's been opened.
Just as we're talking, how's the tree pile stuff going? All right? Now, the key checkout, any issues down tree pile?
You know, where that, that, you know.
I'm just waiting for Todd to cover his pool, so I can kinda, correct the per.
Is a lot of stuff down there again?
Oh, you mean Carroll.
But as far as the key checkout, everything seems to be.
We've had one key lost. I think there's a whole lot of them gone and made their own.
Oh, really?
Mile, two miles, you know, Jergens, they're, if you take a right.
So, we'll have to discuss next spring whether or not we're gonna put a new lock on. And take them all off. There's just some that came in right away and borrowed a key and then they've never been back again. So you know that.
They make copies.
Mm-hmm. And then there's people, I, there's five or six people that come in every other week and get a key and they're gone ten minutes and bring it back, but I can about tell you who they are.
Justin.
Have they gotten?
Give us that copy back of that key. Give us that copy back of that key.
I'm gonna need a key pretty soon. I gotta cut a bunch of trees.
Well, it's hard to know because if they cover it up like they always did, you won't know it. Until you start moving around and burning. Haven't seen anything. Well, you saw some lumber in there one day, right?
Like I said, I, when the gate was open every morning, I could kinda drive in there, but I'm not gonna open it up every morning and just drive in there.
Right.
Plus it's been too muddy.
Oh, yeah.
So, but for the most part, it's been better, I think.
I don't think it's gonna be anything like it was before because Todd's getting the, he's getting the televisions and everything else and, and he's-
Yeah.
Everybody's putting it in his dumpster now.
Oh, man.
Mm-hmm. Everybody's using his dumpster.
Can he move it to the other side?
That's what I told him to do, is move it.
Well, you should move it up towards his place.
Yeah, yeah. Of course you, how close do you want the dumpster to your house?
Was it full every time they went to it or?
It's set stuck beside it.
Todd?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I don't pay attention to their dumpster. I got one.
Does he get that dumpster from Carroll?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, it is Carroll. I mean, we got everybody's Carroll with sites.
That was interesting too. We were supposed to be getting, um, Carroll was supposed to be, if we got our dumpsters from Carroll, we were supposed to have that trash haul to the landfill, which would've been ridiculous. Yeah, to the Sack County landfill. But I know my dumpster is favorite.
Yeah.
Anyway, doesn't-
Yeah, the commercial, he has no, thank you.
See, dumpster's a different story though. That's not the city part.
That's commercial, so that's outside of the city's realm.
Right, but theoretically, you pay-
Yeah.
Both in James, second by Cindy, we're here.
So that's why they-
Would you say aye?
Aye. Are you mad I voted?